Okay, seeing it's ten o'clock, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessments and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Supervisor Finnegan, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We always have a little faster cadence.
I slow it down in my old age.
Yeah. Okay, is there any introduction of new employees? Oh, okay. And can I counsel any reportable actions from closed session?
Nothing for today.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we do want to make notice, because it's, I think it's the first time we've ever had a county supervisor get to this position, but Supervisor Finnegan, a couple of weeks ago, was elected as president of the California State Association of Counties, which is the CSAC, which represents all 58 counties in California. So it's the very first time Del Norte County has had that, and I think it's great, because now we do literally have the governor's ear on a regular basis. So I want to personally congratulate you on that. I think that's great news, and he did put a word in for rural counties during his speech, so we're not forgotten in the process, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, and I do think, and I know, David, you said it before too during previous meetings, getting that representation and sitting on those statewide commissions, Supervisor McClure and yourself are both representing Del Norte County, and that is the only way, due to the size of the population we are here, that is the only way really we're going to get representation on a regular basis. We're too small voting-wise, so we need to reach out and make the trips to Sacramento and other places so that they hear what we're saying. So, and I know there's a lot of other people in the county that do it on a regular basis, so keep up the good work. So, at this point, will request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Any additions, corrections? Okay. So, at this point, we'll now hear brief reports and announcements from board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor Neighbors, would you like to start?
Well, I maybe you'd start with me, being how I don't have my notes.
Do you want me to come back to you?
Well, I see that way, if you guys went first, then I'd remember which meetings I went to.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
I mean, I do remember going to the special meeting, and the rest of the time I have spent cleaning and getting rid of eight years' worth of stuff. I don't like to throw things away in case I need to refer back to them, so that was a big task for the last couple of weeks. And that's it.
All right. Supervisor Hemmison?
Yeah, thank you. Had a, Supervisor Sullivan and I had a two-by-two with the Smith River Rancheria, discussing a couple of road projects that they have out there. Unfortunately, had, or attended the services, or the celebration of life for Kenny Esselstrom, who was a longtime Crescent City contractor, built a lot of houses, moved out of the area for a while, but I've known him since, since high school. He would be sorely missed. Celebrated Thanksgiving in McLeod with my family, and then drove down to Sacramento. I had a Sustainable Forest Action Coalition meeting with, which is, I think it's, I don't know, grown to 18 or 19 counties in California. There's representation out of Oregon, Wyoming, Colorado. It's getting bigger and bigger. Had Congressman-elect Doug Lamalfa was there. He's going to take over for Congressman Herger, and Congressman Plentock was there. Of course, staff from, from other representatives are there. Frank discussions on, on forest issues that, that usually Randy Moore, our Region Five forester, is there, but unfortunately, his father passed away the day before Thanksgiving, so he was unable to, he was unable to be there. But Barney Gant took over for him, did a nice job. Did a lot of discussion on the fires, the activity, how many acres were burned, and a lot of questions on, on getting the, getting into salvage the, after the fires, to get in right away and salvage the timber before it becomes infested with bugs and rot. So, some good discussions on that, and hopefully that will gain more support, and we'll get that squared away. Had a meeting with Ms. Gallo Tioto on airport grant funding. Attended the special board meeting, had a solid waste agenda review, attended the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, and a chamber mixer for, at Edward Jones, at the new Edward Jones office for Catherine Taylor. So, good luck to her and her business endeavors. I think she'll do well.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Thank you. During the last few weeks, I, the loan committee met, and we adopted the, to bring forward to the supervisors the new program regulations and rules that we are going to have to be able to continue with the loan program, and I think that we were able to fill in some gaps and take care of some issues that have been kind of haunting us, especially with mobile homes. And I would like to thank Janine for doing an admirable job in getting that all straightened together, so thank you very much. I've been working with the Resource Department at Humboldt State, and it appears that the MPA process is going to definitely be centered around Humboldt State. So, we've made great inroads that that is happening. In fact, one of the beneficiaries that has received grants at the last two MPA awards is now going to partner with Humboldt State. So, it's a giant step in the right direction to make sure that, that our representation is out of the university that serves us. We're also going to be able to have what we refer to as the boots on the ground. So, there was money allocated, I think through Resource Legacy, that Ken Wiseman was able to secure, that we will actually have a person on the ground, much like we did in the MLPA process. So, that is moving forward, and I think it's going to be a, it's going to be to our benefit. Redwood Park Association met, and we also had our candlelight walk at Prairie Creek, which is a really fun event, and I think there were over 250 people probably that were in attendance, and it's kind of fun walking in the woods at night with illuminated path. Makes you really appreciate how big the redwoods actually are. I attended and listened to the Planning Commission presentation where they talked about Pebble Beach. I had a great Thanksgiving with family and friends. I also attended the special meeting. I'm on my way this afternoon to the Coastal Commission meeting, which will be in San Francisco, and I attended a chamber mixer for the new fish market, which looks really exciting, because you can actually go in and pick the fish you want to take home that's still swimming in the, in the tank. And I've only experienced that once in Washington DC, so now I'm glad that it's happening here in Crescent City, and I hope that people use the fish market, because personally, I like fresh fish, and so I'm hoping everybody joins in and participates in the, in having this new business in town. And then I would also like to congratulate Dave Finnegan for his position, and know that it will make rural communities in California a little bit more on the forefront, rather than in the far backseat. So, I appreciate that work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Finnegan?
I had a-
Or should I say President Supervisor Finnegan?
No, no, no. You know, one of the things, and I'm not going to give the speech now, but one of the things that I notated that wasn't caught on the, on the tape was thanking all the electeds in the group, especially the supervisors that were in attendance, because we really don't do what we do for awards or accolades. And, but at the same time, we set ourselves up for very personal failure, and it's very humiliating and a very humbling experience, and only people that have ever run for election know that, and so I thank all my fellow supervisors sitting here. Anyway, I had a couple of meetings, the National Forest County Schools Coalition, Board of Directors, phone call in. I guess they're going in a different direction. They're trying to reinvent themselves, keeping the eye on the prize, which is the Secure Rural Schools reauthorization. Had a meeting with the Regional Council of Rural Counties, RCRC. They elected their new president, or their new chair, Kevin McCann, I believe, out of Mariposa County, and that's a great board to work with, and I think we'll be working even closer with CSAC and RCRC in the coming year. Went to the Airport JPA meeting, notated a couple of things. Number one, we are probably a couple of weeks ahead on the timeline that was laid out, so things are going great there. All the agencies that are involved are completely coordinated, so we should hit our window for construction beginning in spring. If we don't, well, it's not an option. So, we're all working towards that. The one thing that was talked about was the horrible scheduling that has been happening with SkyWest, with United. It is not all-weather, and so we're going to get to the bottom of it, including if we have to go back to St. George and get the schedule changed, because it just is not accommodating to Del Norte County and impacting our economy. Then, obviously, had a meeting at, with CSAC, and I'm going to, you know, it really was a great conference as far as the speakers and as far as the workshops, and I'm going to let Mike speak to that. Was fortunate enough to rotate into the office of the president there, and it's a great opportunity to take the rural issues, to take Del Norte County's issues to the forefront. This coming year, we are going to be engaged firsthand with negotiations with the governor in the next phase of realignment, which is going to be social services and mental health. And if we can reap the benefits of that, looking at, obviously, how one size doesn't fit all, and to get the suburban and the urban counties to champion the plight of the rural counties. Very briefly, what I told them and what the agenda is, is what you are all familiar with and have been on a local level for some time, and well ahead of most people in the state, and that's partnerships, number one, acknowledging the partners you have, continuing to grow, and then look, enhancing those partnerships, and then looking for new partnerships, perhaps the non-traditional ones. In the case of CSAC, it's strengthening, ones with the governor and the legislature, and then also amongst ourselves between suburban, urban, and rural, and then putting a little focus on it. It, again, asks that everything that we do and everything that we advocate for, whether it is policy, whether it's legislation, most specifically whether it's budgets or ordinance or resolutions at the local level as well as the state level, boards of supervisors as well as the legislature, as well as the governor's office, that the first question needs to be asked, how does it impact the children? And so, again, advocating for it to be the ear of the child. Perhaps some of the work we did here locally, we can use as a pilot or as an example, and see if we can elevate that issue statewide. But it is great to have that access and tend to use it to the benefit of Del Norte County, and should have a lot of fun doing it, so.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Finnegan. Well, it's been a busy, busy few weeks. So, first of all, the conference, attended down, the CSAC conference down in Long Beach, and we had a lot of good meetings and committee meetings, which I don't usually say a lot of good committee meetings. They usually don't go hand-in-hand, so, but these were good. We had Ag Natural Resources Committee, dealt with AB 885, and some updates on that. We had Coastal Counties Caucus, where we talked about continued working relationship with Coastal Commission. I know CSAC's been very engaged on that and making sure that there's this, as Supervisor McClure is aware, that there's a connection between the actual Board of Commissioners and, and the county level, because sometimes in the past, that bureaucracy gets caught in between, and so hopefully that will continue to improve on that. Attended the housing land and use, land use and transportation one, specifically two things, Sequel Reform, California Environmental Quality Act. That's on the top of everyone's minds. It's an ongoing problem in California. It's just got this extra layer of environmental standards and regulations that are, in some cases redundant, and it's just, it adds cost on top of getting some really good things done. High-speed rail was also there, and I still don't know how they're going to make the numbers work on the high-speed rail. It's, that's, that's a big, big question mark. We attended the Rural Counties Caucus, and then one, you know, all these different committee meetings and stuff that we attend while, while we're down there, that's only about half of really what the benefit of going to CSAC. The second benefit is the connections with other supervisors and, and elected officials. So, I got a, had several good conversations with Supervisor Bass out of Humboldt County and Supervisor-elect, or Supervisor, I guess he came by, Supervisor Rex Bone, who's, who is newly elected Supervisor down in Humboldt County, and we're seeing what things that we can do in terms of partnerships to begin to look at, see what issues. Sometimes Humboldt County has a little bit different issues than Del Norte County, but there are some that we share. So, having that relationship with that board is a good thing. Also, coincidentally, we don't see him very often at CSAC, but we, I met a San Francisco Supervisor. As, as, you know, as times that we have, sometimes where, you know, there's always disagreement on any board, but they, instead of five, they deal with 11 people. So, in fact, he was informing that the mayor, which you run for mayor separately, because they have a charter city-county, the mayor has refused to code at two of their meetings. He just didn't show. So, yeah, it's, it's a different situation, but it was good to, to make that connection with Supervisor Marr down in Long Beach. So, and then to kind of culminate the event, we had the annual banquet that night, and that's where Supervisor Finnegan was sworn in, and very cool, and as I mentioned earlier, he put a few plugs in, in his speech about really driving home the point of that the rural, that the suburban and urban counties need to be aware that we still, you know, we've got a huge chunk of land here, and we just sometimes don't have the population, so we need that representation. So, once again, really impressive thing, and I guess the, the only downer on the whole thing is when we came back, we, the flight from San Francisco to Crescent City got delayed, 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 canceled at 7:30 at night. And so, we rented a car and got in at 2:00, 2:30 in the morning, and got to see the slide on 101 and a couple, it was, yeah, it's an impressive deal, but I would definitely agree with Supervisor Finnegan in terms of SkyWest, United needs to get their act together. This is, I've gotten a lot of complaints, not just from the experience we had, but I've got complaints at least once a day from people that are ticked off that their flights have been canceled, and there really hasn't been, you know, weather is some of it, but there's some operational issues, I think, with San Francisco in particular. Plus, the terminal there is, is completely, if any of you have flown in there, if you fly into Terminal Three, usually you have to go to Terminal One to catch, catch the connecting flight, but there's no monitor showing the flights in Terminal One when you get off the plane. So, someone got, I talked to someone, they got chewed out by, by their, by their parent because they hadn't known to go over to the other terminal, and I said, no, 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 there's plenty of confusion when you get into that airport, so, okay.
Forgot to tell you that I finally got my bags four o'clock, 4:30 the next day. And it was like, of course, they were going to compensate me for it, but it was like somebody took my, my suit bag and my suitcase, all my suits, all my shoes, all my clothes, everything, unzipped them, dumped them in a swimming pool, once it was pulled, zipped them back up, and gave them to me. Not wet, soaked, completely, everything. So, I don't know what's going on with that.
So, that conversation would be good at the next Border Coast Regional Airport meeting.
Wasn't that way going down there.
But that, that would be really, really good to do, but on, so CSAC was, was really good, and I think that's encouragement for Del Norte County going forward, for, for this year especially. I've dealt with a couple complaints regarding Barrow. CAO and I are going to make a trip out there tomorrow to meet with some, some constituents out there. Had the honor of representing the county at the Walmart Supercenter Walmart ribbon, ribbon cutting, and pretty impressive if you've been in there, they literally doubled the size of the existing four plan, but some transportation, some infrastructure stuff has been paid by Walmart while coming in there. So, the stoplight, which I'm not always thrilled about, drop, trying to drop my kid off in Mary Peacock, but there's a stoplight there now, and that's, that's part of the mitigation they put in place to pay for some things. So, it was really well-attended. My son was completely stoked, because he's probably the youngest Walmart shareholder that was act, actually at the meeting, so he did it, and we still got him to school on time, so it was good. Morrison Creek with Superintendent Rhodes, Jeff Daniels and I went out, and there's been some flooding on Morrison Creek, so we're looking at what options we have there. Hayuchi Drive, we had some flooding at that, and there's an issue with some drainage ditches that Caltrans needs to keep cleaned, and they kind of backed up, and water was coming over the road, so ton of water. That's, that's the beauty of Del Norte County, right? Got a chance to speak at the Republican Women's Lunch, just to give an update on what, what county stuff has been going on. Had a conversation last night with Assemblymember Jim Nielsen, who is in a runoff. He got 49% of the vote and now has to go to a runoff. Literally 1% more would have pushed him into, into that seat, which I think, I'm pretty comfortable he's gonna, he's gonna be the new, the new state senator in that space, replacing Lamalfa, so we'll have him for a year, which is good for, for us here. Spent Thanksgiving in Napa with, with family, attended a two-by-two with Supervisor Hemmison at Smith River Rancheria, did a gender review, had a meeting earlier this week with GHD, which is working with Smith River Rancheria, and I think we're going to have a presentation towards the end of today regarding the traffic calming plans that are going out north of, of Dr. Fein Bridge in the Smith River area. Went to the youth hostel presentation that they had at Lighthouse Inn, and it looks like they're kind of leaning towards three different locations along Ender's Beach. So, that could be a very good thing for, for Del Norte County. I think the issue right now is they're just looking to find out where they want it, do the, all the design, and then they go to funding on it, so, but it looks like there's a lot of support for it. Had a special try agency meeting, and also called in for a special, that's the only time I've ever had a post-agenda in a walkway in Long Beach, so I can call in to, it was kind of surreal on that side.
I thought it was on your phone.
Yeah.
That's what rightfully mine.
And had a, attended the same chamber mixer Supervisor Hemmison for the new Edward Jones office, Catherine Taylor, I know she'll do a great job. Probably best news last week is my son turned 11, so it's, he's going on 25, so it's, anyway, so Blake turned 11, and it was, he was pretty happy about it, so except the sleepover party we had till 2:00 in the morning at my house, so, yeah. Okay, so at this point, we are going to receive a brief report from the county administrator officer, Jay?
Briefly, we've been working on the Point St. George project, which is the extension of the coastal trail for several years, and we have requested a short extension to hopefully be able to deal with some of the issues with wetland mitigation and biological mitigation. We're attempting to come up with a plan so that we can get through Phase One, which would lead us to Phase Two, which is the implementation phase. So, through the end of February, hopefully we can come up with this plan that will be suitable to the agencies. Another positive, the Battery Point project is now virtually complete. There's one tiny item that's still outstanding, it has to do with paint, but if anybody's out there, you'll see that there is now a new, new or refurbished railing around the upper side of the lighthouse, which I was fortunate to be able to barely fit through that little opening and get out there. They don't allow everybody out there, but I did get to go on the outside of the lighthouse on a very nice day and look at the harbor. But the rest of it is updated electrical system, lightning suppression system, the fixing of the cap, repainting all of that, which Rick Trican-Jones did some of that on their own dime, they were the contractor. Passed to the, to the lighthouse, and then there will be two or three interpretive signs that'll, that'll either be replaced or new ones put out there. So Supervisor McClure had gotten some inroads with the RLFF, which is a funding source here, as long as Coastal Conservancy, and then the Historical Society did a outreach and got a lot of donations, about $40,000 worth of donations. So, that project ended up being very successful.
Are we going to get at a future board maybe, maybe a slideshow or a PowerPoint just showing the before and after?
Yeah, there were a lot of pictures taken, and we'll show you the historical significance of some of the internal workings of the old mercury switches that were left in there, as well as getting some of the shots of the new paint.
Excellent.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get that in there. Barbara Drew and Jim Carnegie worked on that from the staff standpoint, and did a great job on that, and like I said, Rick Trican-Jones was the contractor and did an excellent job.
So, it's ready for another 150 years.
Nice.
Let's hope. Jim will guarantee that, right? Attended a meeting last night, it's a community outreach meeting along with, at the request of the OES manager Cindy Henderson, and Irene Tines, and Deborah Wakefield were there. This was kicked off out in the Gasky area with a very large group that had come in, and Supervisor Sullivan was there. Last night's meeting was about 50 people, which was, you know, at 7:00 at night in the middle of the week, it's tough to get, and it looks like there's going to be some, some neighborhoods helping neighborhoods is what they call that, and it's so that you can be relatively self-sufficient when a disaster occurs. And our areas that are remote are unique in the sense that they're going to be, they're going to be isolated, and it could be floods, it could be, you know, earthquake, it could be tsunami, but we know that it's going to happen at some point, and they need to be prepared, and these people were very enthusiastic, and there's a lot of effort being put out by, by that group, Cindy and the people helping her, to make sure that our community is prepared when something happens. Also, attended a meeting on the Hayuchi Mountain Fire Easement, which is an obligation of the county as part of the conservation easement up there, and I think we are working on a solution. Randy Hooper has taken the lead on that through CDD, and we met up there with the property owner along with a CalFire representative, and it looks like we're going to be able to put a project together fairly cost-effectively and get the job done this summer that we haven't yet been able to do, and then also keep Barrow involved in that. So, there's some teaching that can occur up there, and of course, there was a lot of the day-to-day stuff that we won't get into.
Okay, thanks for the skipping the day-to-day stuff. At this point, I know we're past public comment period, but I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to, to accept the consent agenda.
I so moved.
Moved, any second, second, get your mic on. Yeah, it's been moved in second. Any public comment on items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions, comments?
I would just like to thank Community Development for putting the Title III projects together. I, during the RAC funding phase of the, these projects, it was a leap of faith that the projects that were withheld, that they would go to Title III, and thank you for making that come to fruition for these applicants, that they were really important projects, and good job, thank you.
Yeah, actually, that was the smoothest RAC meeting we've ever been at. It just went through, and so good projects, and yes, Supervisor Hemmison?
I did have a question, and I'm glad you brought that up about the Title III funds, because the, the request from Sunset High that went through RAC first, which, you know, that money is split up, half to the schools and half to, to RAC, and I'm just wondering why the school is not using some of their money to fund- And I'm just wondering why the school is not using some of their money to fund this type of a project through, if it's going through the school. And it's just a cur, I mean, it just came upon me, I just wanted to ask the question, and I, I understand that it's, it's probably for the benefit of the forest, but if it's going through the school, why, why the school is not funding it?
Thought they were putting a position in there.
The school is here, and they could probably answer some of the questions, but just on the fly, I think I can answer some of the questions that the, that Sunset High actually has a staff member that is already employed, and this is then the enhancement for the students to be able to actually get real-world experience and actually end up with earning some money. And in fact, I think that some of the kids last year, one or two of them may have actually gone into Forest Service. Is that correct, Susie? CCC, so it's a, it's a jumping-off place for students in our community that they actually can apply something that they've, that they've learned at school and find a, a pathway to their future.
I'm not, you know, I wasn't trying to make the point that it wasn't a good project. I believe it's a good project, but I just wondered why the school is not, what I think should be doing their part with their part of the money for these educational-type things. It's, it's just a question, I'm.
Do you want Murphy to answer that?
Sure. You guys want to come up and approach, you're going to need to approach the mic, though, because the public can't hear you otherwise. Come on, Susie, you've spoken public before, a few times.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the question was, why isn't the school funding this? Actually, we, if you look at our match, we're more than funding this. Mr. Murphy and I both supervise the summer school program that we're not reimbursed for at all. We've written grants that we're not reimbursed for at all. The extra work among staff, as I say very clearly, and anyone's welcome to come visit us, my teachers have two full-time jobs. One is the traditional curriculum that we're required to teach, just like Delano High School, two-hundred-and-twenty credits, which provide the very same classes that they do at Delano High School with staff of five. And then we facilitate also field trips for students, third grade through eleventh grade, out to our school to teach them about the Redwood Forest and becoming good stewards of that forest. So if you look at the match of the amount of extra time, our, our staff has gone out and taken extra trainings on the weekends, in the summertime, beyond our regular school hours, and we've never been reimbursed for that, you know, no, no trace training. I think I still have my, my shovel. I don't know if anyone's ever gone to no trace training, but it's about not leaving anything in the woods to disturb the woods or anything. So that would be what we're giving back, because we simply could teach that two-hundred-and-twenty credits. And we would more than earn our money that way. But it's amount, the time that the staff is donating to go ahead and, and do this as far as, you know. And also, we've written other grants through Davis.
The concrete, I'm John Murphy. The concrete grant match for this grant, a fifty thousand dollar grant, is a hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. That's, and we could go above and beyond that in terms of the resources, both personnel and material that the school district is committing to this. And I. You all know as well as I do that the county aggressively searches for grants to supplement their very stretched-thin budget. And the school district's budget is just as thinly stretched, and that's what we're doing in terms of, you know, seeking this. We got bumped from RAC to Title III because you guys were searching to supplement your very thinly dressed, stressed budget. That's the reality of what's going on.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, I just wanted to acknowledge there's a couple of people under Items Two and Three, Carol Nova and Margaret Caldwell, that volunteered to be public members of the Delano Community Services District, so I want to extend my appreciation for them for volunteering for that position. And I think we're also taking care of a couple of other individuals, Leslie and Chris Daly further on.
Yeah, yeah, we are, as soon as we get it voted on. Any other questions from supervisors or cops? Okay, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Oh, there was one thing, I guess the Lake Earl breach thing should have been pulled off of there. We don't need that, because it did it on its own.
Okay.
We may need it again.
Yeah, let's just, we'll keep it good. Okay, so as has been mentioned a couple times, there are a couple resolutions and proclamations. So at this point, I'm going to read Resolution titled, Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delano, State of California honoring Leslie McNamara, Supervisor District One. Whereas Leslie McNamara will conclude her service as supervisor on December thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, after serving as a member of the Delano County Board of Supervisors for two terms. And whereas Leslie entered county service as a clerk typist on December tenth, nineteen ninety-seven, and proceeded to hold the titles of clerk typist, account clerk, and legal process clerk within the probation department, DA family support, and the Treasury Tax Collector Office prior to taking office as District One Supervisor. And whereas Leslie was the first, was first elected as District One Supervisor in two thousand and four. And whereas Leslie was an advocate for the constituents of District One, playing a crucial role in reaching out to diverse groups to make our community work better, and has been known for her ability to deal with diverse emotional and controversial issues with respect for fellow supervisors and all of the county's constituents. And whereas during her tenure, Leslie was a member of the numerous boards and commissions, including the Area One Agency on Aging, Barrow Boys Ranch Oversight Committee, Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods, Delano Crescent City Chamber of Commerce, Delano Senior Center Board, Redwood Coast Transit, Safe and Healthy Families. And whereas Leslie has been a staunch advocate for those that have been affected by drugs and alcohol, and in finding community-based solutions to drug and alcohol-related problems. And now therefore be it resolved that the Delano County Board of Supervisors hereby acknowledges the diligence and dedication Leslie McNamara has exhibited during her years of service to the county. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors expresses appreciation, and best wishes to Leslie and good luck in her personal endeavors, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors in the County of Delano, State of California this eleventh day of December, two thousand and twelve, by unanimous poll of vote.
Thank you.
Speech?
No, I, I would just like to say thank you for that and let everyone know how much of an honor. I knew I'd cry. It's been serving on this board. I love everybody I work with. And when I used to hear people in the beginning call us our county family, it really becomes part of your family, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry, I got weepy, I knew I would. Oh, I made her cry.
Thank you, Leslie.
I would just like to say that it's been an honor to serve with you, Leslie, and I know that even going through her books, she's making sure that the county is taken care of. And that level of a commitment is greatly appreciated, thank you.
I know we're going to have a little get-together later on in the month, but very publicly, so the people watching TV later will get to know what an honor it's been to serve with you and how dedicated you were, the meetings, the travel, CMSP and some of the other stuff. The people take for granted, you think we do it just to, for an extra benefit or something, I don't know. But it really is to make this community a better place, and Leslie was one of those bricks in the foundation, so thank you.
And I, I have to agree with both Martha and David, and Leslie's got a big heart. She's been great to work with. She's, she's put in a lot of time, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just conclude with what everyone else is saying. You did a great job, it's been an honor to serve with you on this board. And two full terms as a supervisor, and it, it, there is a lot of stress that comes with the position, but it, it doesn't happen every day, but it gets, comes in spurts where there's a lot of stress. And I know you've taken some very controversial votes, and, and I know you've had the best interest of Delano County constituents, and, and we definitely appreciate your work on it. And, and I know you're gonna, you're probably be actually healthier now without all the extra stress.
No, I don't know, they're already dumping the great-grandkids on me. It was okay when I was a grandma, but a great-grandma, I can't, I can't chase those fifteen-month-olds and two-year-olds kids around anymore.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mike.
Okay, we have one other proclamation to read, and Supervisor McClure has that. Prove and adopt proclamation honoring Chris Daly for her years of service at County of Delano as requested by the Department of Health and Human Services. As, for those of you not aware, Chris Daly is our new Superior Court Judge, so we want to congratulate you on that. That's great news, we, we now have another judge, so. And Supervisor McClure, if you might read.
Yes, I'm honored to read this proclamation. It's the proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Delano, State of California, a proclamation honoring Chris Daly for her service to the County of Delano on this, the eleventh day of December. Whereas Chris Daly has served the county by providing outstanding legal representation to the Department of Health and Human Services in matters related to child welfare and public guardianship and the LCP conservatorship benefiting the most vulnerable children and adult residents. Whereas Chris Daly possessed superior knowledge of the laws pertaining to these matters along with keen insight, sensitivity, and ethical standards, making her a vital part of the team of professionals that assured, and assured Delano Health and Human Services recommendations to the court were clearly in the best interest of the child and thoroughly addressed all concerns and aspects of life. Whereas Chris Daly demonstrated a deep respect for her colleagues and other professionals and organizations and produced outstanding work. Whereas Chris Daly exemplified the unwavering commitment that public service professionals possess as to the safety of the most vulnerable, being deliberated and her desire to see each individual is served well and has a voice during critical, life-altering situations. Whereas Chris Daly served an important role with the Department of Health and Human Services, professional team advocating to children's physical and emotional well-being, and possessed keen awareness of the impacting social and emotional and cultural issues. And whereas the Board of Supervisors, County of Delano, and the Department of Health and Human Services takes this opportunity to recognize the contributions and years of service of Chris Daly on behalf of the most vulnerable residents of our community, and we wish her well in her new endeavor and congratulate her on being appointed by Governor Edmund G. Brown as the Superior Court Judge for Delano County. Now therefore be it resolved that the County of Delano Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim its appreciation and honors Chris Daly for her services passed and adopted this eleventh day of December, two thousand and twelve. So at this time, I would like to present this proclamation to your honor. Thank you.
You gotta, you gotta come to the mic, you gotta come to the mic. Great. All right, thanks, thanks, Chris.
I, I would just like to ask a quick question. Have we had a female judge since Alice Mosley?
I think Judge Mosley was our last.
What year was that?
She was the strong judge, so.
You're too young, Mike.
She was justice.
Oh. So you're.
Trailblazer.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Okay, so at this point, we will go, we're past hour, but we're going to go to public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, seeing, okay, seeing no public comment, we're going to close the public comment session, and we'll go to our next timed item. Number twenty-nine in the agenda, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments related to the proposed updated CDVG program income reuse plan. Approve and adopt resolution for the proposed updated program income reuse plan as requested by the county administrative officer, Jim.
Good morning. Cleared out.
You might announce here, Jim, just.
My name is Jim Carnegie. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the Community Development Block Grant Program Income Reuse Plan. The county's reuse plan was last updated in two thousand and six, and the Department of Community Development is requiring any plan more than three years old to be updated as a special condition to the release of funds for their two thousand and twelve Community Development Block Grant awards. The state this year has provided a template that left very little flexibility or local input into the plan. The only input that we had in this was the percentage or prorated distribution of the program income into the various revolving loan accounts. And there's a number of them, there's housing, business assistance, microenterprises and such. Because, because we have a, an existing grant for microenterprise, and we do not have a housing rehab grant at the present time, we propose to put a hundred percent of the program income into housing. This plan was presented to the loan committee on November twenty-eighth, which recommended approval. At the conclusion of the public hearing, I would ask the board to approve and adopt by resolution the proposed program income reuse plan. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment, and I'm always pleased to see that senior nutrition program receive their portion and what they need every year to keep our seniors.
We're kind of pushing this through so that the, the public service activities that we had, that we were awarded grant funds for can start incurring costs right away. So I think the sub-recipient agreements were into the, on the agenda today also. Thank you.
Good job, thanks, Jim. So I guess we need to open the public hearing. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please step up to clerk's table and use the sheet provided to sign your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please use the microphone for your comments may be heard. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to, any board comments, questions?
Nope, I would move that we approve and adopt by resolution the proposed updated program income reuse plan.
Second.
So moved in second. Could you, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved in pass. Okay, going on to our other timed item, which was a ten forty, presentation by Smith River Rancheria and GHD regarding co-applicant status with Delano County to develop north-south Indian roads and the Tiger Highway one-on-one safety project. Take action as necessary.
This is Terry Saphahan. I'm a consultant to the Smith River Rancheria, and I'm also here today with the tribe's engineers, GHD engineering from Eureka. But first, I wanted to thank you, Leslie, for always being open and honest and friendly in conversations with the tribe. I know they appreciate it, and I always did, thank you very much for your service. I just briefly wanted to introduce the reason that we're here today and to clarify and to emphasize that it's not a request for action at this time other than to direct staff to coordinate and to work with us on specifics. We have two roads projects, which our engineers will give you a brief presentation on, and we would hope to come back next month to have hammered out the details and specifics in a memorandum, understanding between the tribe of the Smith River Rancheria. in a memorandum, understanding between the tribe of the Smith River Rancheria and Del Norte County. But just in general, we have some infrastructure projects. These roads projects represent part of that plan, and we thought that it was a good idea. And we'd been advised by a number of different entities and agencies that if Del Norte County and the tribe were to be co-applicants and team up on these kinds of projects that benefit both tribal members and, and citizens of Del Norte County, that they would go much faster. And particularly in dealing with agencies like the Coastal Commission and others, that that goes a long way in, in, it's not just a single project benefiting one entity. And quite frankly, I wanted to be able to come to the board and have that start at the board level, even though we've had conversations with individual board members and staff. Your staff is just as bad as our staff sometimes. If we're gonna regulate something, we're gonna regulate the hell out of it. And we wanna make sure we're all on the same team and not get your smart people arguing with our smart people. So that's why we're here today. Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you. So I'm Josh Fullman-Chasey. This is Rob Wallman-Limey. He's helping me out with this. I know I have about 10, 15 minutes, and we're gonna go pretty quick through this. If you have questions, you can jump in if you like. Sorry, is that better? So as Teri said, we're here to talk about two projects. First one is the U.S. 101 Smith River Safety Corridor Project. This project's funded by a U.S. DOT Tiger Grant, which is a competitive transportation grant, which was awarded to Smith River Rancheria. There's several other agencies involved, including Federal Highways, who's the grant administrator, as well as the NEPA lead agency, Caltrans, who obviously owns and maintains the corridor, will be acting as the CEQA lead agency, as well as responsible for reviewing all the plans and approvals. And County of Del Norte will be issuing the coastal development permit or coastal grading permit for the project. Here's a quick overview of the Tiger Grant, which stands for Transportation Investment Generating Economic Recovery. They're generally focused around railroad transit import projects that promise to achieve critical national objectives. There's 46 capital projects awarded in 2011, which is multimodal, multi-jurisdictional, or otherwise challenging to fund. Smith River Rancheria was awarded $2.5 million for the construction of their projects. As you can see in the map here, there's only three projects awarded in California, and I believe Smith River was the only tribe who was awarded a project in 2011. The project goals, main project goals, are to reduce vehicle speeds, increase safety for all users, non-motorized and motorized alike, and really to bring the travelers, traveling public attention to the back of their entering communities. They should expect bicycles, pedestrians, possible congestion at intersections. The Tiger Grant has some statutory deadlines that are included in the contract. First and foremost is that all environmental work needs to be completed by the end of March. Following that, the final design needs to be completed by the end of May with approval by Federal Highways and Caltrans in June. All this so that the construction funds can be obligated by the end of the fiscal year in September with construction scheduled for spring and summer of 2014. This Tiger Project's really the culmination of years of work by the Rancheria and other groups. These are some of the previous studies that have been done, which include the needs assessment for roads, the roadside safety audit, the preliminary value analysis, and most recently the engineered feasibility study that was prepared by Caltrans. The engineered feasibility study really serves as the basis for the improvements that are included in this Tiger Project, which we'll be describing here. Rob, nothing else?
So in looking at the corridor, we had to come up with determination of what to do in the quarter to achieve the project goals. And so our major selection criteria for the types of elements that we were proposing for the project include meeting the intent of the Tiger Grant, which Josh explained is to reduce vehicle speeds, increase pedestrian safety, and help motorists understand that they're entering a community and they're not just traveling through a freeway, through a rural area where no one lives. They're actually, these are communities, and there's reasons to slow down. Another selection criteria for the elements that we're proposing is costs. There is a maximum budget of $2.5 million, so the elements that we propose cannot exceed that. There's also reasons that we really cannot have environmental impacts for the project or very minimal environmental projects, given that it's in the coastal zone and the timeline of the project. So this needs to be relatively simple from an environmental perspective, and I'll explain how we're gonna approach that. And we have to make sure that safety is improved and that there's public support. We have a couple of public meetings, which we'll discuss in a moment, and then ease of implementation, and that's also because of the timeline, which is explained there. So the elements that we're proposing are gateway monuments in both the Rancheria area and the town of Smith River, so that there are two distinct communities identified there with monuments. Optical speed bars are paint on the roadway, encroaching into the lanes, spaced at a specific distance in a way that helps motorists slow down, gives you the perception that you're going a little bit faster than you actually are, or it just feels like something has changed, and it's a treatment that is proven to work to slow motorists down. Radar feedback signs indicate your speed next to the either advised speed limits or the regulated speed limit. Colorized shoulders and bike lanes. This is a red shoulder that you can see there. Caltrans is proposing this between Arcata and Eureka, and they have approved exploring this option here as well. Decorative lighting around the two communities. Landscaping, advisory interpretive signs, shoulder delineators, which stop people from kind of passing each other on the shoulders at turns. Advanced street name signs to let people know that there's a street coming up and there's probably gonna be pedestrians that associate with that. And so here's our plan. This is the area here. You can see the mouth of Smith River. The Rancheria is up here, and then the town of Smith River is on the southern end. And so we're dividing the project into three areas, the north, central, and south segments. The north segment is associated with the Rancheria up here. The central segment is relatively agricultural, not a lot of housing or businesses there. And then the south segment is the town of Smith River. And so the plan is, the size of the arrows that I show in this little animation here indicate vehicle speed. So you have vehicles coming in from the north, they're going relatively fast, and we want them to slow down as they enter the area. And then they slow down, and they're going slower than the current average speed there. Allow them to speed up in the middle, knowing that you can't really keep people going slow for the entire six miles. And so, given that it's a rural area, not a lot of houses or driveways there, people would go back up to their speed. And then use treatments to slow them down again so that they're again going slow through the town of Smith River, and then let them go fast again as they leave. And the same in the opposite direction. Slow down as you enter, speed up a little through the center, and then slow down again as you leave. And so here's our approach as to how to accomplish that. Looking at the north, as you come in, you immediately see optical speed bars. It gives you the feeling that something's about to change. Then you see radar feedback signs. You see your speed limit and what your current speed is. Then you see a gateway monument. I'm entering town, or I'm entering a community. Colorized shoulders make the lanes feel a little bit narrower. It makes it feel a little bit more like a town. Landscaping around intersections, decorative street lighting. And then all of that goes away. You go through the central segment, and then it happens again. Optical speed bars, radar feedback sign, shoulders, gateway monuments, landscaping, decorative street lighting, delineators at a specific intersection, we're proposing there at Rowdy Creek. And then you leave town, and it would be the exact same thing in the north direction. So again, here's our timeline for the, the scale of the project. This is extremely fast timeline, but this is the regulated timeline by the Tiger Grant, so this is what we have to accomplish. Design must be completed by May. Environmental must be completed in three months, and so that's why we have to have minor environmental impacts. So we designed all those elements, or we're designing all those elements in such a way so that the majority of the work is actually happening on top of existing pavements, and anything that's outside of existing pavement is just light pedestals or signs. We've already delineated wetlands to make sure that we avoid all of those, and the environmental impact should be minor. Project number two is North-South Indian Road. It's a completely separate project, though geographically they touch one another. Funded by the Department of Transportation, BIA, and getting approvals from NEPA, from Federal Highways. So this is the project area, just north of the mouth of the river, zooming in on that. Here is 101 in green. There is Indian Road. It's called both North and South Indian Road. For a little context, you've got the casino there, the health center, the tribe's cemetery, and then access to the overlook over the mouth of the river there. Existing additions, it's 1.1 miles. It's paved. It's relatively narrow with practically no shoulders on either side and no pedestrian facilities. It's maintained by the county. This is what it looks like. You can see that there are practically no shoulders and no pedestrian facilities. Importance of the community, it provides access to tribal and non-tribal housing, exclusive access. Some of those houses cannot be accessed by any other means. Public health service facility, the tribe's community center, the casino, convenience store, and then sites of cultural significance. It was also identified by the tribe as a high priority in their transportation needs assessment in 2007, so the tribe has been envisioning this for quite a while. Goals similar to the other project, improving pedestrian safety, improve vehicular, vehicular safety, promote a more livable, walkable community. Those are the project goals. And then resurface the roadway to extend the useful life of the facility. Project is, the design and construction costs are funded by the tribe. The design components, this is you, Josh.
Yeah, I'm gonna get into this. So I'm gonna run through these real quick, and then we have a couple of figures, kind of describe in space where these go. So first one is curb, gutter, and sidewalk on North Indian Road. This is east of Highway 101. Two pedestrian-accessible speed hump crossings on North Indian Road. Three vehicular speed humps on South Indian Road to reduce vehicle speeds there. Four-foot-wide pedestrian walkway and five-foot-wide landscape strip on the west side of South Indian Road. Pedestrian lighting at the speed humps and crosswalks at the intersections. Utility conversion, this is undergrounding existing overhead utilities, the electrical, the cable, the telephone into underground facilities. Numerous drainage improvements, including undergrounding some of the existing open drainage ditches. Several retaining walls, repaving all the driveway aprons, and then repaving the entire road with new striping and signage throughout. So again, here's overview of the project location with 101, North-South Indian Road. Looking first on the east side of 101, and zooming in, here's the project area. New sidewalks on both the north and south side with a accessible speed hump to allow pedestrians to safely get across the road, which would look something like this. Looking at the west side of Highway 101, extending, there's an existing sidewalk, but extending that existing sidewalk on the north side to the west over to Indian Court with the addition of an accessible speed hump crosswalk to connect the community center and health clinic to the existing parking lot on the south side of the road. And as the road makes the bend, looking at a cross-section of it facing south, keeping existing lane widths, maintaining that 11-foot travel lane, so no additional paved surface there, but adding a two-foot gravel shoulder, five-foot-wide landscaped area, also swale to convey drainage, in addition of a four-foot-wide sidewalk. And a little further down the road, there's some areas where the existing topography constrains what we can do. So another cross-section looking south, again, maintaining that 11-foot-wide travel lane, adding the two-foot shoulder. But instead of using the five-foot-wide landscaped area, the sidewalk would be separated from the travelway with asphalt concrete curb. So this project's been ongoing for several years now. Here's a list of things that have been completed to date. Includes the needs assessment, environmental, or the NEPA EA environmental assessment. Several geotechnical investigations have been completed, along with biological investigations and full wetland delineation. Much of the civil design's been completed, and there's been ongoing agency meetings and coordination. So the next steps are for the tribe and county to formalize the MOU. Need to update the NEPA documents, include some additional improvements that weren't in the original document. Both the CEQA CE and the coastal grading permit need to be completed with Del Norte County as the lead agency, active and co-applicant with the tribe. Finalize the design, bidding, and construction. So those are the two projects, and I went through that pretty quick. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Teri, if you have anything else you'd like to add?
Any questions from board members? Supervisor McClure?
I have a couple. And in the first project with the decorative lighting, at Coastal Commission, there's a lot of concern about light escapement and dark sky, so have you taken into consideration that these are going to be directed down and not affect the dark sky for birds and migratory?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We anticipated that'd be a requirement, given it's in the coastal zone. The lighting's gonna be limited to isolated areas around intersections, really, to make people on 101 aware that they're coming up to an intersection, expect pedestrians, expect cars, but they'll all be downcast to try to limit that light pollution.
Okay, that's good. And then the other one is on the second project, the timeline of when you will take this to Coastal?
Really, any time. I mean, it'd go through the county, so it's not going straight to the commission, and we're ready, from an engineering standpoint, we're ready to proceed with that at any time.
Are you locked into such a tight schedule with the funding? This one has more, I'm just.
The second one does not have the time constraints that the first one does.
Okay, 'cause I was concerned that if there were an appeal filed with the county grading permit, it could hit a slowdown at Coastal if there is an appeal. Hopefully, there won't be an appeal filed, but if there is an appeal filed, that would be something to take into consideration. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors?
What happened to the roundabout? I am not disappointed, but I.
Neither am I.
Caltrans has indicated that because speeds are too high through the corridor, they're not gonna accept any improvements at the intersections like a roundabout, like a signal, anything like that. It still could be in the future, but at this point, it's just not feasible.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors?
Good job. It's much needed.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we're, have the opportunity to work together with the tribe, and congratulations on the Tiger Award. That's fantastic. That's unheard of.
Yeah, it's only one in Northern California, so. Yeah, great presentation. That's, the visuals are awesome.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. At this point.
I guess you'll be back in a month with the, or you'll be ready to submit the grading plans? Is that the plan?
Right here.
In a month, are we gonna see you back with final plans, or do you go through planning commission? What's the, our next step?
Teri, you might come up to the mic.
Well, from what I heard in the initial presentation, is he's looking for our board to have consensus to direct our staff to work with their staff for completion of this project.
Okay, that's what I needed to know next step.
And I would so ask the chair to direct.
Okay. So unless there's any comments, that's been directed by, by the board.
Okay, I'll, I'll be speaking with CDD staff. They'll be the point on that. And then the other item there that Teri had brought up was the MOU. That would come back to the board. They'd, those have to be approved by the board.
Okay.
So he asks direct you then, or Mike Wood, to work with them to develop the MOU, present to the board.
Ditto.
Yeah. Ditto.
So a point of clarification, does, do you want a single MOU for both projects, or do you want them? I, I think it would be simpler if it was just one MOU detailing our roles and responsibilities for both projects. But if you want them separate, then, then.
I was maybe just under one. Any thoughts from staff at all?
The simpler the better in the case of expediency in this case, yeah. I know that the second project's got a little different timeline, but we'll see what we can do in one.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks for the presentation. Good project.
One last note, there's gonna be a public meeting for the Highway 101 project in early January, and so we'll send notification to you.
Yeah.
So we'll be back next month?
All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks for taking the extra time on that, too. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going on to item 31. Discuss disposition of, oh, let's take the two budget transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved for, that's item 26, 27.
Budget transfer 1103 and 1201.
Okay.
26, 27.
Any public comment on the budget transfers? Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions? Okay, Tony, could you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, going on to item 31. Discuss disposition of title on assessor parcel number 131-120-17, and provide direction to staff for determination of title and return to the board for approval. I ask. I actually put this on the agenda. I've had a couple constituents in Gasky. There's an old bus barn that the district used a long time ago, and it's been empty. And we've even tried, we've contacted the school district about it, is there a lease outstanding? So at this point, I think we, my thoughts would be to give direction to staff to see, one, what's the situation with that, and see about the possibility of leasing or selling, or just to see what purpose it...
Just, go ahead.
Excuse me, I would just like to make the correction before any further discussion that that was parcel number 07 instead of 17.
Correct. Okay, got it. In the agenda. Okay, thank you.
It's still 17 on our agenda.
This was brought to my attention a while back by Supervisor Sullivan, and we had done some preliminary work through the recorder's office, through CDD, through the assessor's office, trying to find the grant deed for this parcel, and have been unsuccessful to date. The assessor does have some records, including one black and white photo that includes a 1957 Chevy sitting in front of this building. And that's really all it is, there's a building permit for electricity. Myself and Neil Lopez went up to the site. The electricity is no longer connected. The building's in pretty good shape. It's between two other buildings. We have not been successful in finding an agreement with the school district for leasing the building. This isn't really out of the ordinary for older parcels. A lot of times, back in the day, the property would be donated, purchased, somehow the county would take title, but grant deeds weren't always followed through with. And a lot of it is because it was just, it became the counties, and there was no need for a deed at the time. So there may be, in order to find the grant deed or look to see what the history of this property is, we may have to expend a little bit of money to do a title search. And then bring back to the board a couple of alternatives. It would be, I think, in most situations, surplus property, but the surplus property process is unwieldy and does take time to go through. And the other question is, is there a property owner or somebody in that area that would like to lease it? And then what are the parameters of leasing the property to them, liability insurance, et cetera? So in doing this, I ask Supervisor Sullivan to get direction for staff from the entire board, so we could then go through the next couple of steps, report back to the board, and go from there.
Any questions from supervisors?
Go for it.
Okay.
Yeah, chase down that deed.
Direction is given then, yeah. Okay, going on to item 32. Approve and adopt resolution setting the property tax administration fee, administrative fees to be charged in 2012, 13, as requested by the auditor controller. Item 32 in the agenda.
What if somebody missing?
Yeah, apparently.
I don't see the auditor controller. You have a memo in your agenda, and it indicates the yearly fees for administration of the property tax system have been calculated. In order to implement the fees, the attached resolution must be adopted. The fee will be deducted from the city, special districts, and redevelopment agencies. First apportionment of secured taxes. The state does not allow the county to charge for any of the school funds for the property tax administration fee. This is an annual action that's required of the board.
Okay.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and adopted, or moved and seconded. Any questions from the public, comments? Okay, a close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any other questions, comments from supervisors? Okay, seeing none. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 33. Consent to begin the negotiation process with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority for the BCRAA acquisition of county-owned roads and property required for mitigation for the proposed runway safety area improvement project, and authorize the chair to sign the attached willing seller letter for submittal with the environmental enhancement and mitigation program grant application to the California Natural Resources Agency as requested by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. Wow, that's a long part there, so...
This is willing seller, no net loss?
It depends on what we're gaining at the airport. So is the county gaining the economic advantage? That's...
I have a couple of questions. Are you going to do a report first?
No, I expected a presentation maybe from the airport authority. Essentially, they're asking for the authority to enter into negotiations, so I'll let Janine follow up on it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Janine Gallatioto, and I'm here representing the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority this morning. And what we have, what we have for you is a request on behalf of the airport authority to enter into negotiations with them on the acquisition of roads and county-owned property, and to support us, support the authority if the need arises that we need to acquire also property through the tax default process. This is to mitigate the effects of the runway extensions that we hope will occur, excuse me, occur, as Supervisor Finnegan said, this spring, or begin the process this spring. We have applied, or we're in the process of applying, actually, for an environmental enhancement grant through the California Natural Resources Agency, and it is specifically not for construction projects or the related transportation facility. What it's for is to help with the mitigation of whatever you need to mitigate. In this circumstances, we're talking about habitat and wetlands. And as you are aware and have agreed to previously, Pacific Shores is one of those areas that most of the permitting agencies would like to see us enhance wetland area. So we're hoping that we are successful in applying for this grant, but one of the requirements is that we have to have a willing seller letter. Now, this means that basically, in our case here, is that we're asking you to enter into negotiations with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and we must list the properties specifically. We can't trade them out later, and the grant is due January 4th. So I have listed all of the roads in Pacific Shores except Tell and Kellogg, and all of the properties that I'm aware of that the county owns at Pacific Shores, in Pacific Shore subdivision. So that doesn't mean that we're asking to buy all of them, and it doesn't mean that you're willing to relinquish those. What it does mean is that we can at least talk about them, and that's what this willing seller letter is for.
Okay. Are there any questions?
No, I just, a couple of really brief comments for Martha, because into her questions again. As number one, for people that might get their knickers in the wad by watching TV, it's not for runway extensions, it's for the runway safety areas.
Right. Sorry.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah. And then the other thing is, it's county-owned. We don't pay taxes on these properties, okay? So there is no net loss. It's an opportunity for a net increase in the economic value.
Okay, any other questions from supervisors?
I have, I have one primary question, because it was my understanding, and I hope I'm wrong, that mitigation couldn't be on just the open current wetland properties, that mitigation was for, had to be the either, had to be roads, because otherwise it's already wetland? And so it isn't a, part of the, I think the mitigation requires wetland restoration?
Right.
And not wetland enhancement? Or does it include both?
Well, this grant can include both.
Oh, okay.
But for, for purposes of this grant, that's the wording for the grant.
Okay.
We're looking at the roads, but of course, if we, we remove the road...
We have to have...
We have to have the property.
Got that. But I was just making sure that...
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from supervisors?
So I would ask that we can, as the board consent to begin the negotiation process with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, and to authorize the chair to sign the willing seller letter.
Okay, it's been moved. Second, any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Aldous in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously.
Thank you. Good job.
Good job. Okay, we're going on to item 34. Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delnor. Authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments. Okay?
No letters today for the board to sign. Obviously, there's been some changes in legislative orders, and there is some legislation that will be introduced soon, if it already hasn't been, and we'll be reviewing that, but on the budget end of it. In January, we'll be looking at our mid-years and see where we're at locally. You know, there's been some mixed information. I guess it's not mixed, it's just not as positive regarding some of the revenues for the last month, but at the state level, I think on a better note, or you know, is that it looks like the public safety funding is going to be out there. It's the method of getting to it, and the administration's staying on top of that, and we'll be discussing with the probation department, as well as the sheriff's office, what the needs are and what the impacts are that would be offset. We just don't have any guidelines yet, and we've had some, it looks like the Department of Finance will be the agency that we have to have direct contact with. And I've spoken with Supervisor Finnegan, or President Finnegan, from the CSAC role also, to help us out with that, and I think that'll be very much positive. But it looks like the Department of Finance is the one that we'll be sending our advocates to also. And we've reached out to David's lead in, at CSAC, and we'll be meeting with him or talking with him, too.
So two good things on that. Number one, Ana Montesantos, great relationship there, and she pledged at the conference to continue that relationship.
Well, she swore you in.
And, it was a run-on. Yes, we did, that was, swore us in. But secondly, the new executive director of CSAC is Matt Kate, who is the cabinet-level person for the Department of Corrections Secretary. And so he understands exactly what's going on. And now he's in a different, he's advocating for counties, and especially this year, rural counties. So we'll see what we can get done.
Good job.
Good. Okay. Any other?
On another note, I won't Leslie, let Leslie get off without me getting to say a couple of good things. I do appreciate the time you put in, Leslie, and especially the last three years that I've been the CAO, but even before that. And I appreciate her ability to sit down and talk for extended periods of times about a lot of different issues that both of us needed to talk about, whether it was just event or otherwise. But I do appreciate the time and the effort, and your honesty and your integrity. That was, those are a couple of things that definitely you have to have as a supervisor, and it's appreciated.
Thank you, Jay. I was going to, and now that everybody's out of here, a little less formal, thank you and Gretchen for being available all the time, for easy to work with, putting things on a level where the general public can understand, you know, being an attorney, you know. I'm talking about, and Tony just being new, I've gotten to know her really fast, and she was a great fit. So whoever made the final decision, she is a great fit for this board and this job.
Any other? Yeah, Supervisor Hemmingson?
I just have a small announcement to make. There will be no Solid Waste Authority meeting. Seeing sorry, just found out that Leslie will not be able to attend, and both David and Martha will be gone.
Well, I would have been willing, but since they couldn't make it, there's no reason.
If you're willing...
So we have no afternoon meeting? We have no afternoon meeting?
Oh, I don't know. You're not going to be here. We're not going to have a quorum.
Not unless he wants to get in San Francisco at 2:00 in the morning.
We are not going to have a quorum, so there's no need, Kelly's out of town. Also, Rick Holly and both Catherine Murray are not going to be able to...
Wow.
But Kelly just texted me and said she could make it, but if we can't get our three there, there's no sense in wasting our time.
Okay.
So I will get a hold of the director and have him get a hold of everyone and let him know.
Okay, well, I will adjourn the meeting, since it is Supervisor McNamara's very last meeting, and congratulate you and wish you well on your personal endeavors. You did a great job as supervisor, and it's a long haul to be in for eight years, so...
I would like to have done another quorum.
Well, you did a great job, so congratulations, and the meeting's now adjourned.